United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, for the routine justice of all.
Welcome to our board meeting. We're so glad that you could come tonight. Mr. Andre, who is what's called your board link, he comes and visits your school, is going to come over and have some conversation with you and give you a little gift from us.
How's everyone?
Good.
How you liking 3rd grade so far?
Good.
Good, so I'm glad to hear it. See the camera right there? What we want you to do, I'm gonna give you your pen and look right at the camera nice and loud and tell everybody your name, okay? Start with you.
Taylor.
A.T.
Oh, sorry buddies.
Kaylin.
Try to move over here a little bit.
Anna.
Ben.
Good job. Well, we thank you for coming and leading the pledge. You did a wonderful job. I always enjoy, I've been on the board 13-plus years, and I always enjoy, my favorite part of every board meeting is something we started a long time ago, having students come in and do the pledge for us and tell us a little bit about their studies and how they're doing, and I always enjoy it, especially when it's students your age. It's great to be young and have the great opportunity that you all have to come to school every day and learn and grow and develop friendships, and I want you to know that I'm very proud of you. I do my board work because of the satisfaction I get from seeing people go through the school system and graduate. Nothing more rewarding than the day we sit up on the graduation stage and see young people graduate and get that diploma and go on to the next part of their life. So, I thank you kids for coming tonight and continue to work hard and do a good job and make us all proud, make yourselves proud, make your parents proud, make everybody proud because that's what it's all about, doing a good job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andre. And thank Mrs. Dahl for being here tonight. We appreciate that.
Thank you for the invitation.
And I'm not sure if they have a moment, did you have the children prepare a couple for them?
Want to share what we're learning this year, everybody? What kinds of things are we doing in math? What have we been doing lately?
Look to your right.
What have we been doing and what have we been learning about? Doing some fun stuff in math. Now they're gonna be shy.
Look to your right.
To your right.
Yes, I think if someone gets ready to share something.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
How division is like repeated subtraction.
Very nice.
Fast math.
Doing fast math on the computer.
I completed that.
I know, I gotta get to the next level, don't I? My next job, my next job, switch over to multiplication. How about in reading? What kinds of things have we been reading about?
Rhymes, leeches, and erosions.
Erosion, bodies of water.
We've been learning about the power of reading.
Ooh, what does that mean?
It means like how much you like reading and to know how to read and to really listen.
And what about what we've been writing about? I'm not sure what Mrs. Meyer's been writing about lately. Doing some research. What kind of research are you doing?
Like about animals.
You're doing things on the computer?
Inspiration aid.
Be on the computer, doing some webbing and some brainstorming on the computer.
Look to your right again.
Okay, Jay.
Left. How multiplication is like repeated addition.
You got it, you got it. Need a lot of problem solving. But thank you for the invitation. Anybody have anything they want to add?
Thank you, parents. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you for your support.
Being part of the school building. Thank you so much.
Do you have a motion?
Follow.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Seconded by Eli. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried?
3.0, minutes of previous meeting.
Do you have a motion?
Go.
Moved by Kathy.
Second.
Seconded by Michael. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried?
4.0, verbal communications, residents wishing to be heard. Any resident of the Auburn Lawrence City School District is welcome to address the Board of Education on items pertaining to the education and/or the operation of the school district. There will be time provided on the agenda at this week. Any resident wishing to address the Board of Education is requested to come forward to the lectern on being recognized and to give his or her name and address. Questions relating to the employees of the district will not be permitted. Such questions should be referred to the superintendent at another time. Residents have been asked to sign in at the lectern and limit the presentation to three minutes or less.
Do we have any residents this evening wishing to be heard? Step up right up to the podium.
Good evening. Frankly, I'd rather be anyplace else but here right now. My name is Miriam Chapin. I'm speaking on behalf of my granddaughter Ella and her parents Philip and Kelly Holtby. Ella's a 3rd grade student at Seward Elementary School. Ella has multiple disabilities and she has an IEP which includes a one-on-one aide daily across all settings. She's not receiving her one-on-one aide services. The school district is not following her IEP and is out of compliance with a legally binding contract supported by federal law and is denying Ella a free and appropriate public education. The teacher and principal have been very willing to listen to us. They've listened to our concerns, but they do not have the authority to hire staff. I'm here tonight because on 9/24, we had a meeting with Ella's teacher, Mrs. Coleman, and the Assistant Director of Special Education, Jen Whipple. We informed them then that her IEP was not being implemented appropriately. On 9/27/13, I hand-delivered letters to the offices of the Assistant Director of Special Education, the Director of Special Education, and the Superintendent, telling them that Ella's IEP was not being followed and implemented appropriately and to please make sure it was implemented appropriately. I've had no reply to that letter almost a month later. This has been going on for six weeks and six days. If this is not fixed and we are not guaranteed that Ella will have her one-on-one aide without sharing by the end of this week, 10/25/13, I can assure you we will take it to the next level. You also might want to check into how many other children are not receiving their one-on-one aides due to insufficient staffing before they also end up standing here before you. I will be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time, and do you have any questions?
One moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other residents this evening wishing to be heard? Any other residents? Okay, thank you.
5.0, Superintendent's Reports. 5.1, School Board Recognition Week. Ms. Evelyn?
I just want to read the words here and then I'm gonna make a few comments about how much we appreciate the work of board members and our student representatives. Whereas each year, School Board Recognition Week is observed by more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout the Empire State, and whereas the men and women serving as members of school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education, and whereas the members of New York's local school boards are community leaders who provide an invaluable resource as local decision-makers responding not only to the respective educational needs of their communities, but also serving in the interests of schoolchildren and their future. And whereas during the week of October 28, 2013 through November 2, 2013, special activities and programs will be held in communities across New York State in recognition of this observance, and it is fitting to join in acknowledging the commitment and contributions of members of local school boards. Now, therefore, I, Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, do hereby proclaim October 28, 2013 through November 1, 2013, as School Board Recognition Week in the Empire State. This is the governor's proclamation, again, formally recognizing school board members across the state for their service. We would like to offer, again, our gratitude and appreciation for the members of this board for their active interest and participation in the work of the school district. I can say for myself and the team that's present here this evening and for the rest of the community, we recognize the many, many hours of service that you dedicate to this work, and it's not just for the board meetings that you attend. All of you sit on subcommittees at the board, you're actively meeting with us during the school week, on the weekends, trying to improve the condition of education for our children, and we greatly appreciate your volunteerism for the work to, for the betterment of this school district and community. So, thank you very much.
5.2, Update on Education Grants. Miss Evelyn, Lila George, and Camille Johnson?
I would just like to introduce Camille Johnson, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services in our district. She's going to be talking to us this evening about at least two of the competitive grants that have been offered by the State of New York's Education Department. And one of the things that's important to highlight is that even though the State Education Department has deemed this a competitive grant, in terms of the staff that we have to work on, the application process for these competitive grants, which take a great amount of time, in some cases, that makes them actually at the end of the day, much less competitive. If you don't have the organizational capacity to write these grants and complete them in a way that is timely, because all of them are floated and then have a very short turnaround time, then as a public school district, you're not able to compete for those monies that are provided by the state. So, I want to thank Camille and the outside community organizations that she's working with to access these grants, and just know that it is the continual commitment of this team to pursue those monies, again, to improve programming for students in this district. So, Camille, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, great. Before we get involved with the Community Schools Grant, the Extended Learning Time Grant, we're just gonna give a brief update on the Universal Pre-K Grant.
Thank you. So, I know you've been getting the updates on the Universal Pre-K Grant. We submitted it on October 16th. This is the, on the agenda of the governor to improve and the president to improve our opportunities and access to pre-kindergarten programming. In our district, we're lucky because we already have a lot of community-based organizations that provide these services. The grant called for either adding new full-day UPK slots or expanding current half-day slots to full day. More points per se would be given to new full-day slots. So, you can see the number on the slide there. We've applied for 42 new full-day slots, and really, that was as per the capacity of the organizations for which we work. 209 half-day slots expanded to full day. So, probably about three-quarters of the current slots we have, folks would be interested and had the ability to expand those from half-day to full day. This grant would actually begin December 1st, so ASAP, and we believe that we are in, we're poised to begin using that money immediately. I'm not exactly sure how it was calculated, but I got to put the numbers into a little spreadsheet, and that was the amount of money we were allowed to apply for, so we applied for the full amount.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Lila. All right, the next grant we're gonna be discussing tonight is the Community Schools Grant. This RFP was released on August 12th, and this was due on September 18th. The goal of this grant is to be developing strong partnerships and additional supports to students and families designed to counter environmental factors that impede student achievement. The grant would be three years, and that would be starting on December 1st. We essentially would be able to bring in about 165,000 per school year, per school. This particular grant, a lot of grants that we do either encompass an entire district or a number of schools within the grant, these particular grants, we had to do individual grants for each school. So, we did submit seven applications for this grant, and I do want to thank Mike for us tracking him down that day. He did drive in from Syracuse because the grant needed to be postparked by a particular time on a day, and we did need a signature from him. We do expect to receive notice of this award in November. These grants start December 1st, so this is the State Education Department, and we do expect that, they do not tell us when we're going to hear about an award for a grant, if we are going to get a grant or not get a grant. We do believe that we did submit very strong grants. It is very unlikely that we will get awarded in all of our schools, but because of the fact that we could, we did apply in all of our buildings, so we will be kind of seeing in December. The idea is to be coordinating with public, nonprofit, private, to be delivering these services to our students, thereby, again, increasing the student achievement and to attain other positive outcomes. It's the idea to have hubs in our schools with schooling services specific to academic services, health, mental health, nutrition counseling, and other services. The Community Schools Grant, we've partnered with the following agencies to provide programs and services in our schools. I would ask that you do take a look at, I know that I did send you a number of documents, but the one document that was program and services for community schools, this does outline all of the different programs and all of the different agencies that we are partnering with. These are not all of them, but this is a number of the agencies that, in the development of the grant, we did have to reach out to, talk with them about what, in fact, they will be able to provide our students, gain a commitment from them in terms of, you know, an understanding that in the event that we are awarded the grant, that they would be coming into the schools and being able to provide these services. These are examples of programs and services that we have proposed to provide with the grant application. Again, really suggesting that we take a good look at all of the details in a few of these documents that were provided. Some of the ones that do cost a little bit of money in terms of upfront costs, again, the money in terms of the vastness of this grant is not a lot of money, because a lot of the services that the nonprofit organizations or profit organizations are providing, they're often in-kind services, but for example, for the dental services that we would be providing, we would be having to buy some of that equipment, and that equipment would be portable, and it would be brought in on carts, and it would be coming in the schools and out of the schools, and we would really be able to be providing dental screenings, cleanings, fillings. We'd also be expanding the Brush to Crush program that we do have right now at Genesee Elementary, which is promoting healthy dental care, and a variety of other services that are meant for both students and parents. So, the idea is to be engaging parents. So, in this particular grant, we do have a piece about some after-school programming, but the way that this is designed is to have parents coming in after school, providing a dinner at 4:30, then after the dinner, providing some activities for parents in terms of parenting types of groups and skills, as well as activities for students. In addition to that type of after-school program piece, then we do have a number of other parenting classes and different types of programs for students depending on, again, which schools we may be awarded the grant. So, we are looking forward to hearing about that Community Schools Grant at the end of November. We're really expecting November, again, because it's a December 1 start, and that we have made a commitment that we would be able to get started on December 1st if, in fact, we do receive the award, and all of the agencies that we have partnered with and would be collaborating with would be on board with that. So, we do hope to hear about that in the near future. In terms of the Extended Learning Time Grant, this RFP was released on September 6, and the deadline is later on this week. Again, there is a collaboration, and I think that this is really important, that with the work that is being done and is strongly being suggested from the State Education Department, is collaboration in our communities, and that also speaks to some of the parent engagement piece. So, the nonprofit, community-based organization, which is referred to as a CBO, we are beginning to work with Katie Moran, who is the Executive Director of the Partnership for Results, and we began to work with Katie on this essentially right after the Community Schools Grant was submitted. We began work on this grant, and initially, we were really trying to bring back our after-school programming in the district, and this grant could occur for our Title I schools. So, as you recall, we have had after-school programming through the 21st Century Grant from the Partnership for Results at Casey Park Elementary, Genesee Elementary, and the Junior High. We were hoping to also expand that to Seward this year, and we were really designing this in an after-school programming format. We did understand that it was mandatory to offer it to all students, so our original format was that the after-school programming would be, for example, at the elementary school K-6, where in other years, we've had it 3, 6, you know, we've had it certain number of grade levels, and we were under the impression that we would offer it to all students and all families, but not all students and families had to participate. There was a question-and-answer session two weeks ago on October 8th where we then learned that the Extended Learning Time Grant is mandatory for all students in a particular school. So, what does that mean? That means that you cannot take an elementary school, for example, and say, "We're gonna do this for a couple of grade levels." It has to be the entire school, and it has to be all students, and it has to be an extended learning time of 25% of their current learning time. So, we have to take a look at that school calendar and extend the time in a particular school. We really thought long and hard about if we would be able to do this and in which buildings we would be able to do this. We decided that because of the fact that we have five elementary schools and only three are eligible for the grant, it would be very hard to have three school calendars in terms of the timing of the day one way and a little, you know, longer, 25% longer over the course of a school year, and the other two buildings not sharing that same calendar. So, because of that, we were, provided an opportunity at Auburn Junior High School to consider this. So, we have been considering this at Auburn Junior High, and again, this must expand the learning time by 25% over the current school year. This particular grant would provide us with $871,500 for the first two years, and that extension up to two more years is based upon evaluation and performance. The learning time can occur anytime in the school year, so it can occur on summer vacations, it can occur on holidays, before school, after school, weekends, okay? So, it's an extension of that calendar by 25%, and you can do it in a variety of different ways. The purpose of the design is to increase school-wide learning opportunities that focus on academic achievement and improving that academic achievement. The design must include additional time for the core academics, enrichment, professional development. We are looking to continue with the initiatives of this district in terms of our co-teaching teams and providing that inclusive philosophy for all students within this Extended Learning Time Grant, and that in terms of some of the professional development, we would be looking at some of the folks that we had in here last year, doing our special education audit, Julie and George Thea Harris, to help with supporting and continuing with the professional development of not only our co-teaching teams, but all teachers of how to be differentiated instruction and continuing with the model that we are moving towards with our co-teaching This grant, we have some different elements to the grant right now, and what we are doing right now is we're proposing a grant. We do have a proposal written. This grant is due at the end of the week, and that while in our application, we have had to put together how we're looking at accomplishing this, I cannot stress enough that we can modify and adjust what we put in the application along the way, as long as it meets the spirit of that application. So, for example, we must add at the Junior High 278 hours. Another chart that I had given you is something that Timothy Moon was able to help us with, which is taking a look at the different scenarios that we can put together. So, if you take a look at this chart, there's a number of different ways that we can do this. We can do a certain number of hours. We can do a certain number of hours the week before school starts or any time in the summer. We can increase time either before school or after school. What we've designed right now in our grant proposal is 25 hours the week before school starts. So right now, we're thinking that we would do that for five days, five hours a day. Again, that's something that if we are awarded the grant and we are out and we are having community forums and we are having parent focus groups, if we hear that that is not something that the community is looking for and the constituents at the Junior High are looking for, we would be able to modify and adjust that. So right now, we're proposing it at five days, five hours a day, equalling 25 hours. We may adjust that down to three days or down to two days, depending on what we're hearing and what we're learning as we go along this path. We're really designing this with project-based learning modules. One thing when we're working on grants is that even though we do have an extended learning time, the State Education Department is looking at us to be very innovative. So we cannot, say for example, add a certain number of minutes onto each bell because that's really, would not be considered being innovative. We could not indicate that, "Well, we're going to have students after school for the entire time and the entire time doing homework help," okay? We need to be showing that we are providing them with educational opportunities that are enhancing their skill set to be able to perform in a higher level on the state assessments. So project-based learning modules comes out of the Harvard Institute, and it is research-based. And we do believe that that is something that the state would be considering innovative at this time. Our educators can choose to participate. This was something right from the start, is that, "Wow, you hear that you're going to change the calendar, you're going to change the school year." What does that mean for our teachers? That is not something that we are looking to be changing the Auburn Teachers Association contract. Cheryl and I had an opportunity to discuss this, and that essentially, what we are indicating and what we are sharing with the educators at the Junior High is that those educators at the Auburn Junior High would have first dibs at those jobs. We would be wanting the educators at the Junior High to be interested in this opportunity and to be creating something different. And we are talking a number of educators. One thing that I found with this Extended Learning Time Grant is that while we were initially thinking of this as after-school programming, which now we need to retrain ourselves in terms of the semantics that it's extended learning time, for those of you that may have taken a look at the Q and A, which is 231 questions and answers, riddled throughout that document is references and comments to after-school programming and specific to a ratio of students to educators, they are using an OCFS ratio, which is the Office of Children and Family Services, which is exactly what we were under before when we were doing after-school programs. So while this is extended learning time, I think that the shift of an idea of actually changing a school calendar and changing a day, that we do need to recognize that it's not something that is considered in that same way of after-school programming, but we're also having some requirements that are similar to that. So the requirement for our educators is 15 to one. So 15 students to one teacher, one adult. And that translates to, when we have 620 students at the Junior High School, that translates to 41 educators assisting in the after-school time. We are recognizing, one of the first things was, "What are we going to do about our student athletes? How are we going to do that?" That is part of that Q and A, and that those students do need to participate. They do need to meet the time requirement, meet the time requirement of the extended learning time. And we're going to need to think about that and think about how are we going to provide those opportunities? So if, in fact, we're awarded with this, these will be some of the things. In the meantime, you know, Tam and I have already begun some discussions on that at question and answer and listening session that we had at the Junior High. We had them last Wednesday and Friday. On Wednesday, there were some really great ideas of different things that we can do with athletes. At first, we were kind of thinking, "Well, we might be taking a look at some online learning and online types of things that those students can do." But the one thing that's interesting is that when you think of an hour and a half after school, many of us, we think of when the teachers are done with their day, which is 2:50, but the students end their day at 2:17. So our athletes, either being released for practice or to get, hop on a bus for contests, they are leaving around 3:00, 3:15. So that amount of time, they're still going to be in school until they're released. So we would be figuring out, what can we do? You know, we may end up with some modules that a coach could be providing a student, that they could be working on when they're on the bus, that they could be working on as part of practice. So there are a number of different things that we can be considering with this. In terms of that notion that the sky's the limit, how can we, how can we begin to put together some project-based learning modules? The project-based learning modules, what we're thinking is that we would have them in like five or six-week timeframes. So there would be a timeframe to a particular module. So we could end up designing a number of different modules. I think in the beginning, we're going to be, in the event that we receive the award, figuring out, "How do we provide students with enough offerings so that we're meeting the requirements of the grant?" Then through planning and through more of our work and time, we're going to be considering, again, the staff at the Junior High shared on Wednesday, a number of things. They said, "Well, even if our student athletes have to do our competing and are on a particular sports team for a certain period of time of the year, what about if we put together a particular module that would bring them in on Saturdays for a couple of hours and that then we'd be able to extend some time, you know, on holidays?" So essentially, that idea of, "How can we build some things around for particular groups of students?" Then we had other folks saying, "How do we put together some modules that the home and careers and art teachers can get started at the Junior High, and then they could be continuing and extending into the modules after school?" One of the things with this grant is that while we would be considering things in the beginning, kind of at the Junior High, just for starters, we do need to recognize that as part of the budget construction for this grant, we can include transportation. So if we do bring in students prior to the school year for a few days, we would transport them. We could build that into the budget. If we wanted to design a module where we have students choosing to go out to BOSI's for a career tech exploration experience, and that's going to be a couple hours a night for that period of time for that module, we would be able to provide them with transportation. So for example, if we had them there for a couple of hours, maybe it would only be a couple of times a week for that particular module, and it would not have to be every night. So we would be really looking, and we're planting the seed right now for ideas of, "How might this work?" We've had teachers say to us, "Boy, we can get some student groups together, student-focused groups, and those students would be able to create some modules and create some activity that they'd be able to do." We want to make sure that while the objective is to increase our state assessment scores, we want to add the fun factor into this for our students. We want them to be provided opportunities for different modules that they will have an interest in, so that they will be highly engaged in that work. We are aligning this, again, with the district initiatives, which is integrated within that Inclusion Improvement Plan. And I think that the notion of, again, inclusion being a philosophy and it not necessarily being specific to special education, is that we are, we are thinking that this is also going to provide families and students with opportunities, when we do get incredibly creative with these modules, to provide our students with some experiences that they may not otherwise have been able to tap into. So if we are awarded the grant, we will be designing a communication plan that would, again, include sharing information, listening. We do recognize that this would be a shift, and it would be a change to a traditional school calendar. We understand that. We understand that this grant is due this week, and for many people in this community, this may be the first time that they're hearing about that. And that it may feel a little bit like, "How is it that we're talking about changing a school day and we've not gotten the word out yet?" This is something that we really just learned about two weeks ago. And we have been working diligently to try to get as much information out as we can to the educators at the Junior High, so that we could solicit information from them to be including in the grant. And we really have gotten quite a bit of nice ideas. I know Dave, Dave has received ideas, I have received ideas, and we've shared them and have been able to embed them into the grant itself. If we get this grant, we want to be able to hear, "What, what are the parents thinking? What are the students thinking?" And we want to be able to have that amount of time to plan and try to work around as many of the challenges and barriers that this may be for our students and our families so that we could have that 100% mandatory participation in this. Because of the fact that there are so many different options and opportunities between before school, after school, holidays, weekends, summer, those types of things, that we're really thinking that, that together we would be able to figure out how we could meet the needs of, of the majority of our students and families in the community. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has about this grant. And I'd be looking for your kind of tenor of, "Is this something that we should be moving on at this point in time and submitting this week?"
I have a question. First of all, the grant, we're looking at two years and then another two years based on performance.
Yeah, performance and evaluation.
So, so my question is, would it be starting, if, let's say, we are awarded, would it be December 1st, 2013 till December 1st of what, 2016, 17, 18, whatever it is?
Yeah, Eli...
So would it finish half the year? That's my question.
The December 1st start was for the Community Schools Grant, the Extended Learning Time Grant. Actually, I'm glad that you brought that up because we would actually earn more points on a grant application. It's all about how many points you get. We would actually earn more points if we were willing to say that we're able to start this on January 1 of 2014. And there's no way we're going to do that, okay? So our proposed start date is for the 14, 15, is for next school year, okay?
So, so that I understand, because, you know, you shared a concern that many people would have, we're not looking at implementing this till the next school year.
Correct.
So that's important to note. I think also, you know, you know, I'm just looking at, you have board presentations there and things like that. This is really innovative, and it's a big step, and I know it's difficult and it's scary sometimes, but that's exactly where we expect it to go. You know, so I, I'm, I'm an advocate for it. And I know that there's a lot of logistics, and we've got to look at it and how would we move forward, but certainly, this is something that we will need to be moving towards. It's not only us, it's going to be, it's going to be happening in this state overall. And so having that extended hour, having been able to participate, being able to continue doing presentations and things like that, it's, it's a big deal. And if you're looking at the Junior High School, just imagine the results that we're going to get at the high school, right? When you're taking them from K-6, where, you know, they're being nurtured and they're learning a lot of stuff, to that 7 and 8, right? Now you have the ability to be more innovative, to then go into the high schools, just takes us to the next level. So I mean, I'm very excited for this. This is cool.
And then speaking of kind of that transition, that was another piece that we were looking at, is that we do have a team right now of educators that are involved in a 6th to 7th grade transition for next year. And one of the things that this grant would offer is that time before school getting started, to have students getting acclimated to that building, understanding their lockers, getting the lay of the land, figuring out where they need to go, for the teachers that are interested in participating, getting to know those teachers, so that come that first day of school, they're walking in the door and learning. They're walking in the door and teaching is occurring and learning is occurring, and we're not having those couple of days slipping by to just help people feel safe and comfortable, which is very important, but we may be able to get at some of that a couple of days before school gets started.
You know, one of the things you said, Camille, that piqued my interest greatly, and I think probably caught the attention of many here who are watching at home, is the promotion of access to a BOSI's program or the BOSI's campus, promoting an awareness of this beautiful BOSI's campus and, and rich programs that we have at our local BOSI's. I've often heard people talk about having to wait, right, until their children and students get a specific high school age in order to learn about those, again, very rich programs. And this, this Extended Learning Time Grant would provide our students with access, our 7th and 8th grade students with access to that, to those programs. That's pretty exciting, because for some, and for many, it could be the spark that they need, the awareness that they need to, to engage them.
One of the things that I'm a little unclear on, one of the many things that I am a little unclear on in this is, is it mandatory that students attend? Initially, you were saying it was mandatory that we offer it, and then at the end, you said, "We're looking for 100% mandatory." Are we telling every single student at the Junior High School, "They have to do this"?
Absolutely.
Okay? This is incredibly disruptive to people's lives. And I'm concerned about entering into something as significant as this. We don't know what we're going to do. And I'm wondering, I think we're at a point tonight where we're sort of talking, "Is this an idea that is worth pursuing? Is this something we want to consider?" If we go down the path and get this grant, can we, after we have consulted with the community and the students and the parents, and we've all sat down, is this something we can say, "You know what? This is not something we want to do. We were awarded the grant, but now that Auburn has looked at it and has the information, Auburn does not want to do this."
You can do that with any graduate.
Can we? Because I, the idea that tonight, I'm going to make a decision to tell 602 students and the 300 or however many families that is, that we're going to do this, I don't know what we're going to do.
I have to agree with Michael. You know, I hear a lot of great ideas, but ideas don't make it feasible. The grant itself only gives us financial feasibility. It doesn't give us technical feasibility, operational feasibility, or scheduling feasibility. So, so in that sense, I don't know that this is something that we should go into. We started out with this as a project that would help us to replace the after-school program, which was hugely successful in our elementary schools, not so, not as successful in our middle school. And now it's morphed since October 8th in... And now it's morphed since October 8th into something that feels unwieldy to me. It feels like we're, we're jumping at this money. It feels like the dog, the tail is being wagged by the, the dog is being wagged by the tail, you know? It feels like we are trying to take this idea of extended school day. And nobody can really disagree with, with those things will help our students, but we haven't, we haven't aligned it with, with our own goals. We're putting the cart before the horse. We're taking it and we're trying to, really just trying to make it fit. So it doesn't feel feasible to me. It doesn't feel like it's something that we should do, do quickly, and I'm not so sure that there's, you know, that we have buy-in from all of our, our stakeholders. I have questions about, this is really an outsourcing, right, to Partnership for Results? They'll be responsible for, for the extended school day and the extended school year?
Yeah, in terms of the Extended Learning Time, we would be looking to be, to be working with that non-for-profit agency, the Partnership for Results. And really what we're looking for tonight is for us to be able to submit the grant to see if we're awarded the grant. At this point, we don't know if we will get the grant award. Because of the fact that a number of the awards, this is a $20 million pot of money, okay, for competitive grants, per year, okay, $20 million per year. We would be looking in terms of our pot at 187, 500. If we were awarded the grant, we would have to be notified about this prior to January 1st. So we would have all of those months to be able to make a decision, is this something that we're going to move forward with? And to be able to put our thumb on the pulse of the constituents at Auburn Junior High School. And we would also be able to have opportunities to make this, to shape it a little bit. I understand right now that there are some ideas and that we would need to shape it. And that there is monies that are available to be helping with that in terms of the design of a module, that would be something that we would be needing to pay people to design. We would need to be paying people to oversee the Extended Learning Time, similar to having the site directors and the overall after-school program directors that we did have in the past. So there would be people that would be responsible for that oversight. And the start of anything, I think, the start of anything, I cannot in any way tell you that this is going to be an easy road. I can tell you that this is an opportunity to move, to be bringing some innovation into the school district, something that is completely different, that is engaging, and that if we were able to be spending more time with our students, it is our belief that they would be able to perform better on those state assessments. And that it is my shared hope that with the knowledge in the room, whatever room I'm in, when we were in the junior high library last Wednesday, and to say that we don't have, we don't have this all figured out yet, but that with everybody's opinions and interest in participating, we might be able to pull this off. And at this point in time, let's take a shot at it. Let's, let's put, let's put the application in the ring and see what happens. This may, it, it may turn out that come December, you know, we share with the board and the community that we did not get the award. If we find out that we did get the award, then there's going to be a lot of work to do. And if we find out that we don't have enough adults to be able to manage it, we don't have enough innovative and creative ideas to break down some of these barriers and these obstacles in our way, we may, you know, need to make that decision that it's not something that we can move forward on. But we also have so many months to figure that out. So it's not necessarily that we're saying to the junior high community at this point in time that this is a done deal. What we're saying is that we want to create something different there. We want to provide an opportunity for creativity and innovation. And that if we can have an opportunity to see what comes out from it, to plant a seed and to see what grows from it, that, that is really what we're looking for right now. And nothing is easy when you get started with it. I think that we could speak to a number of the different initiatives that we get started in school districts, but it is something that could result in something really positive for our students.
What we need from the board tonight is a consensus agreement if we're going to move forward with the application itself for this grant. I heard from Eli, I think you are in favor.
Absolutely.
Yes. I'm in favor of pursuing this. From what I've heard lately at a couple of the workshops that I've attended over the past month, as education is changing, we cannot be teaching students the same way we were teaching 20, 30, 40 years ago as when we were in school, which is still happening in many of our classrooms, that we need to look, we need to be progressive, we need to move forward. To me, if this, if we were awarded this grant and this came together and it was successful, we could be a model for other school districts. They could, they could model their middle school after our middle school. I would love to see something like that happen. I think it's a great adventure. Let's try it, let's try for the grant. All we're doing right now is deciding whether we should try for this grant, and I say yes, let's try for the grant. So I'd like to hear from everybody, their feelings.
I, I agree. I feel we should go for the grant also. I mean, everything we do, we're going to be faced with challenges. It doesn't matter what we, we attempt. Will there be challenges? Yep. But I like the fact that the kids can choose their modules, kids can make choices for themselves, what they're interested in, and, and we have to give them that shot. I, I definitely feel we have to go for this grant.
I feel that we should not. I don't feel it's a fully vetted plan. I don't find that there is a lot of feasibility in what we're talking about. We're talking about a lot of, a lot of ideas that may be, may be great, may be wonderful. I feel that this will be, too much of it is out of our control, okay? I feel that if educators can opt out, our educators are not participating in it and they're, they're, you know, outside people being hired, how do we control the quality of what's happening there? Too many questions for me, too many concerns. I don't feel that we should move forward with the grant application. I'm afraid that we'll, we'll end up, we'll end up having to do things that are constraints of the grant, and I'm just, I'm just hesitant, I'm very hesitant, and I don't feel we should apply.
Can we hear from Sam?
No, I think we should go ahead and apply for it. You know, we've got plenty of time to work out any glitches that may arise, but I like what Kathy said about the, you know, kids having the choice. You know, we're moving in a different direction. It's obvious all over the United States that we're more different, I guess, so I'd actually proceed with it.
I know.
I have some reservations too, but I'd like to move forward, see if, one, we get it, and then, two, how we can manage it and what comes about it, and see if it's something that we can even do. But I think we can't get to that stage unless we, we actually get the grant, so I'd like to at least try for it and go from there.
Bill?
I certainly do listen to Michael and Dea and understand their concerns, and I've heard from a couple of parents and share some of those concerns. But there's one thing I do know is that I don't think it hurts to apply, and I think the administrative team we have in place could, could make it work. So I, I certainly have my blessings to go forward with the grant.
Michael, any other concerns?
Well, I'm not, I don't think they're different. I mean, I, I'm, I'm listening to, and I sort of agree with many people. I have a tremendous amount of confidence in the people that run this district and, and the parents and the students, and I, I think maybe we could make this work. I don't know that I want to say no to the opportunity. I, I agree with many of Dea's points, and I, I am very concerned about where we may wind up, but to say no to the opportunity, I don't want to say no to the opportunity. I have a lot of questions. There's going to be a lot of heavy lifting to get me to say yes down the road, I can tell you that. I'm not going to say no to the opportunity, but I am very apprehensive about this. Before we do this, I want to know exactly what we're doing and how we're doing it and what we think is going to happen and why we think those are going to be the results and what this is going to cost. And we're, we're going to spend a lot of time talking, I suspect, as we put, to tell you no, don't go ahead. I'll never tell you no, don't pursue different opportunities and try to do things differently. But a lot of heavy lifting involved with me on this one, I think, but we'll, we'll see where we are in December.
Okay. So consensus, go ahead with the application, and please keep us informed and updated. Thank you.
Thank you. 5.3 annual audit report for year end of June 30, 2013, from our partner, St. Marshall and Sanza.
Good evening, Mr. Hutler.
Good evening. Good evening to everyone on the board, all the administrators that are here tonight, and the members of the district that stayed around here as well as those that are watching us down the road. My name is Mark Catmore, I'm your, your audit partner for St. Marshall and Sanza. We completed your audit and have submitted that to New York State. So New York State has already received that, so that your funding continues on, obviously we want to make sure that got in. What I'm going to do tonight is just briefly kind of go through the board summary that you have on top of the package in front of you there. Not going to go through all the details. We did have a very detailed audit committee meeting, went through all the individual reports as well as the individual letters. So what I'd like to do, as I said, is to go through the summary, answer any questions if you do have any questions on things that you might have looked at already. I'll be glad to answer those if I can. If I can, I'll be glad to get back to you. If you do have questions, I've also left some cards with Lisa, in case you don't have my, my number by this time, but I think most, most of you do know me, so I, we'll start from there. So what I'd like to do is kind of have you follow along with the board summary that I put on top of your stack of papers that you have in front of you there. First thing that we talked about really is your auditor's report. This year changed a little bit. We now call it an unmodified report as opposed to an unqualified report. There were both clean opinions or positive opinions for the district. We didn't find anything that caused us to qualify or modify your report. And that's shown on pages 1 through 3 of the, of the main report. Second part of the, of the main financial statement deals with what we call your management discussion and analysis. In that, that section there, we show a number of things, a couple, a couple items that are a little bit different than the rest of the report. We show comparative figures which are not reflected through the rest of the report, and that part of the statement really is prepared by your administrators and then reviewed by us. The first part of the statement that you have is the, what we call the government-wide statement. Those statements are, your statements within, within the main statement there are presented in two different ways, which I've gone through in the past. One on a full accrual basis, one on a fund basis. The government-wise is on a full accrual basis where we take all of your funds, group them together, and reflect those. In the current period, we, we made a couple of changes to things. There were a number of accounting pronouncements that we've implemented for you. They were government accounting standards, number 63 and number 65 this year. In the past, we've implemented, another number 54 was implemented about two years ago for you. Going forward, there's going to be some, some other items that are going to be implemented dealing with your pension liabilities going forward. On pages 15 and 16 of the, of the main statement, we show, as I said, we show the statement in net position, and we also show your statement of activities, which is on the full accrual basis. In the current year, your net position in the district decreased some $2.1 million, which is net of depreciation of $2.8 million. Included in those figures really are the liability for your post-employment benefit. These are the benefits now that are set up as a liability on your books for retirees. Currently, the cumulative liability for that is some $23.9 million. For that, in the current year, we added to that number about $4.6 million as, as an expense to bring the cumulative liability, as I said, of $23.9 million. This was in accordance with, with GASB 45, which again was a, an accounting pronouncement implemented about four years ago now, and shown with figures that are calculated by an actuary that you have for the district. Next, next item, this is on page 2 of the summary, and following along, we're talking about the general fund. Financially, as I said, the general, the district is in a very stable financial position at this point in time, with their assigned, unassigned general fund balance in line with the state fund balance requirements, and that's shown on pages 17 and 18. Currently, you're using some $1.2 million of that unassigned fund balance to reduce your 2013 and 14 taxes. In the prior year, you used about $2.4 million of that to reduce taxes. I then, through the summary there, I just talk about, a little bit about the fund balance and the way this was changed in, in prior years and some of the definitions of, that we, that we now use on the presentation. Your unassigned fund balance at the end of 2012 was $2.5 million. The balance currently is $2.7 million. And that's, again, within the 4% level mandated by the state. That's shown on, on page 52, which also shows all the detail for that. The current year general fund activity, this is, I'm now over onto page 3 of the summary. Your current year general fund activity on page 20 reflects a current year excess of $1.3 million. It was well under the budget deficit figure of some $2.4 million. So originally, you had, you had set up $2.4 million to, to use. You actually ended up with a, with an excess of $1.3. You then turned around with that $1.3 and used some of that to fund some of your reserves, which is, again, a very positive situation for the board to take. And I do have a comment that we'll talk about in a little while in terms of the funding of that as you went throughout the year. Also, in the current year, you transferred some $400,000 from your debt service fund over into the general fund to use to pay current debt payments. Your actual expenses were under budget by some $3.4 million in the current year. They were in a couple of different categories, central services due to lower utilities, employee benefits due to favorable variance in your health insurance costs. So those are just a couple of things that, that changed. And again, you can take a look at the, the detail of that. Within the statement itself, we show all of your general fund figures, both from an actual as well as a budgeted figure. So you can compare the two and you'll see the differences on a line-by-line basis, similar to what you get when you look at your budget status report that you get on a monthly basis from the, from the district. Under other non-major funds is your school lunch fund. In the current period, you had an excess of some $18,400, although that did include a transfer from the general fund of about $38,000. Right now, you have a cumulative fund balance of about $303,000 in the school lunch fund, which again can be used for either, either deferring future increases or to buy equipment for, you know, future use within the program itself. The last thing on the, on the third page there, we talk about your debt service fund, your short and long-term debt. We talk about a current year note that was issued of some $9 million for the capital project going forward. Again, that normally is going to be turned over and transferred into a serial bond going forward. Also, within the debt service fund, there's about $1.4 million that's remaining. Those are funds that are left to transfer over to the general fund and to use to offset current period, current, current period debt payments that you're going to have. The current period, in the current year, you used $400,000. Over the last couple of years, you've used just about the same number going forward on an annual basis. Moving over to the, to the last page of your Moving over to the, to the last page of your summary, we talk about the capital projects fund. Again, that reflect a deficit of about $1.6 million. Again, if I, when I say deficit, it sounds, it sounds to be a bad thing, but really, really the only reason that you have a deficit in that fund at this point in time is because you took out debt. The dollars are still, or a majority of the dollars are still sitting there waiting to be used. And then you're going to pay off that debt with future appropriations from the general fund. So, even though it's in a deficit situation, it's still a positive thing for the district. The last item that we have within your main financial statement is what we call your single audit report. Again, in there, we talk about two different things. One is your compliance with internal controls as well as your compliance with federal laws and regulations. And so, we, we look at a number of your individual grants, similar to the grants you were just talking about here. And within that, we didn't find anything from a compliance issue to, to question. We didn't find any question costs that the district made during the year to, to question that would have to be paid back. So, again, that's a, a positive spin on your work that you're doing with all of your federal grants. One last thing that we, we also do, and we haven't been able to, to actually file it yet for you, but it's called the data collection form. We take the same information that we give to you in the single audit, which is, which are all the dollars you receive from the federal government, and we, we file that electronically. Currently, the federal government, not so much because of their shutdown that they just recently had, but even before that, they had the system that they have out there to report. Federal grant dollars has been shut down. They haven't gotten it up yet. It's supposedly, supposed to be back in place by the end of the year, and then we'll, we'll file the report for you. Again, it's, it's really just a matter of procedure of filing the information. Same information that you file with New York State through the single audit, and then we file with the federal government. And you sign off on it as a district at the same time that we file it. Also, you file, file off on that electronically. The second statement that you have in front of you there is the thinner one, is really your extra classroom activity fund. Again, this is something that you, you receive on an annual basis, takes into account all the clubs and activities of the district. Again, we do, we, we take a look at things on a, on a test basis. We don't test all transactions that go through there. Majority of items that go through there are, like I said, done on a cash basis, so that's the way our, our report to you also states that. Again, there's a number of inactive groups in there. You always want to continue to take a look at that on an annual basis. If there's inactive groups, usually you would transfer the dollars out. And I, not positive, I think yours goes to, to your student government. Is that correctly there, or is there another one? I think if, so, we do close out one of the funds or one of the clubs that would, that would go over to the student government and then be shared by everyone. The last two things that I have for you there, there are two letters that you have within The top one has a number of comments kind of going down the page, so. It's not the one that says significant audit findings on it. So, if you see the other letter, it should be, it should be the top letter. There are two items that, that came up to us, and this is what we call our management letter to you, so they really aren't what we term as significant findings. We did have one finding that we put within your, your audit report. It had to do with a payment on a ban. Payment was made, but the actual recording of it was not recorded at the end of the year when we came in. It was subsequently recorded and the, and the adjustment made. The two, the two items that we're talking about in our letter here, the first one is talking about appropriating reserve allocations in a timely manner. We're suggesting that board policy be established to set up the allocation of reserve dollars prior to year end, using dollar amounts with or not to exceed balance for each reserve that you would transfer dollars into. So, to give you an example, this year, you transferred dollars into the different reserves. As a board, you actually approved that after the end of the year, which again is, is something that really should be done as of the end of the, before the end of the year, before June thirtieth. So, what we're suggesting is that as a board, you get together, take a look at your estimates of where you're going to end up from a, you know, an excess at the end of the year, and then put a, put dollar amounts, up to dollar amounts, say, of what you could transfer into each of the respective reserves that you're taking a look at. So, again, it's just, again, it's just a, a policy that, that's wide, also is something that New York State suggests that you have in place before the end of the year as opposed to transferring and approving dollars after the end of the year. Second thing dealt with the West Middle School, which it was used somewhat in, in the current period that we, that we took a look at as far as for the audit. I know in the current period, it's really not being used, so it's up for, for lease. So, with that discontinuance of use, we normally would take that off of, offline and not depreciate the building in anticipation of it either being leased out or being, you know, sold as, as a property, whichever, you know, comes up or you decide as, as a board and as a community, really. So, what we're, just, all we're suggesting in a current period that we don't show depreciation on that property. In the, in the prior year, there were two other items that had been taken care of, and those were, those were corrected in the current period. The last one that you have in front of you there is really our representation letter to you. And with everything that, that goes back and forth from a legal standpoint, these are, these are letters that we submit a letter to you as, this is our representation to you as a board and as a district in terms of how the audit went and items that went through here. In the first part, we talk about significant audit findings, and again, we didn't have any significant audit findings that we had to bring up to you as a board. There are certain estimates that you use, both from a depreciation expense as well as accrued liabilities or liabilities that are set up at the end of the year. We didn't have any difficulties encountered in performing your audit. There weren't any corrected and uncorrected misstatements. You'll, you'll note that we, we did make note of the, the one item in there, in regards to a ban. That was corrected by management when we came in at the end of the year. So, if there were any, if there were any adjustments that we did not make, we would have attached those to this letter and given those to you. We didn't have any disagreements with management as we went, went through the, you know, the field work as well as finishing up your audit. We had a management represent, representation letter that you now also signed and you sent back to us. We have your superintendent and your business manager sign those and, and then send that back to us, and that allows us to, to release your report. So, we, we kind of have a give and take on the representations that go back and forth. Our letter here, again, is, is assuring you as a board that everything has been given to us. Continuing on, we talk about any other consultations with outside accounts, which there were any. You do use an outside actuary to calculate your other post-employment benefit, that large liability that I talked about before. We didn't have any other audit findings or issues, as I said, those would have been brought up to you, and we didn't have any other matters that we needed to bring up to you as a board. Are there any questions, I guess? You know, I, I know some, some of you probably haven't had an awful lot of time to actually absorb the, the audit. I'm not sure how much got out to you from electronic version. We went, we went fairly deeply into the audit for, with your audit committee. I think they asked some, you know, very, very good questions as we went through it. Any, any other questions, I guess, any questions from the audit committee that, you know, since that time that, that we talked?
It's just as good the second time.
It's a little bit faster this time, too. Thought I would, thought I would, thought I would speed things up a little bit for you. Again, as I said, there's, there were a couple of things that changed during the year. You'll see, you'll see the, the new accounting pronouncements from a dollars and cents standpoint really didn't affect your, your statements an awful lot. Some affected the titles, some affected the titles that we now put on our opinion. We now, as I said, we now have titles on, on each paragraph for the opinions that everybody understands exactly what we're, we're talking about as you go through and read this. From a public standpoint, probably the best thing for anyone to do is, is to always read your management discussion and analysis, though, which is in front of the report. And so, we, we've always, you know, told the public that if there's one area for them to read, that it's really in a lot more plain language than going through the rest of the report. To get through the rest of the report, you have to almost be a CPA at this point in time. People get through about one or two of the footnotes, and by that time, they're ready to almost nod off, so. But, and, you know, your, your statements have become very technical over the years. When I started doing this thirty-something years ago, your footnotes were probably about eight or 10 pages tops. Now, you're up to about 35 pages of footnote, so you can see how things have changed in terms of disclosures that we have. Just a couple of things and note, I guess, going off in the future. You're going to see in the next two years that there will be new pronouncements that are coming out there, that are going to, and they won't affect your, your fund balance or your fund presentation statements, but it will affect the overall district-wide statements. What it's going to do is it's going to show the liability for any unfunded pension contributions that are out there, both from ERS as well as TRS. And it would, could also possibly take into account adding in the balance of your other post-employment benefit liability that's out there. So, it's going to turn your government-wide statement in that position into a, into a negative position. This is something that's not particular to your district. All districts as well as all municipalities are going to have this. So, in the future, you're going to see some very negative numbers when you take a look at the overall government-wide statements for any municipality or any, any school district. It's not reflection on you, but it will be probably taken into account in terms of bond ratings and things like that going forward. Again, as I said, everybody has to apply and implement these, these same accounting pronouncements, but I'll keep you informed again of those. And before you get to, to the end of those years, you know, inform you what those liabilities are going to be, so you're going to see them, because they, they will be fairly, fairly substantial dollars going into your statement. So, with that, I'll leave you. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, as always, for your continued business. If there's anything that we can improve upon with our, with our audit, please feel free to, to give me a call. We're there during the year. If you have questions as you go throughout the year as a board and you have any, any either accounting questions or, or even, you know, any other technical questions, be glad to, to answer those for you. That's really what we're here for, not just to come in at the end of the year and, and do your audit. So, you know, use your, use your CPA wisely. It's, that's what you pay us for. We can help you. It's kind of like when you do your taxes, we can help you during the year, but we can't help you after the end of the year. After the end of the year is over with your, your taxes are kind of set in stone, so. So, again, thank you very much.
Five point four, update student representatives. Jordan Middleton and Lina Stane.
I would just like to want to bring up that tomorrow, or Thursday night at Auburn High School is college night, starting at 5:30. We have about 100 or more colleges that are going, so. I mean, it's a great opportunity for everybody to go and talk to anybody and hear about the different schools, because time is coming.
Getting closer, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, end of the fall sports season is coming up. The football team made it to sectionals. They play this Friday in CBA. That's going to be a game. The girls soccer team also made it. The tennis team has a few girls going. My cross-country team has our sectionals November 2nd. So, we should all look forward to hearing about how those teams did.
How did home coming up?
Oh, that was, that was a lot of fun.
How did they do in the game?
Not as well as everyone had hoped. I won't say the score, because it's not the greatest score, but the student section was great, which is a big part. And even though we didn't get the win, it was still a lot of fun.
The dance went well?
Dance went really well.
I do know, I believe, at the junior high, they have held their elections, so they have their president, vice president, and their SGO representative on all that. I believe all that happened within the last couple of weeks. So, just as maybe a suggestion, if you guys have time, maybe in the next month or so, maybe get together with some of the, you know, the junior high SGO and have some conversation with them and maybe bring back some feedback of what's going on at the junior high. You know, that would be great. I know you're still in sports, so maybe after your sports season ends, you know, we could shoot for maybe first part of December. Maybe, you know, sometime in November, you could meet with them and bring us some information on the junior high and what's going on with that.
I'm a class officer for my class, so when we meet every other week, I could try and get a hold of the junior class officers and see if they could come up to the high school and meet with us and talk about what's going on there.
That would be great. We'd appreciate a report from that. That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Five point five, staff development day, October 25th. Lila Church.
So, we're really excited for our staff development day coming up on Friday. You've seen the agenda, but I just want to highlight, obviously, we have tons of work going on in the district with the Common Core, the new MyMath program folks are working on, a lot of technology associated with that and our continuation of our APPR work with Oasis and now with School Tool. The teachers are desperately in need of time to just make sense of these tools and, and access them and input their baseline scores from their student learning objectives. So, there's a lot of really important work that needs to be done on this day. The day will truly be differentiated. We do have some compliance things that need to be happening in the morning with right-to-know and such, and then building level work, and then department work or grade level work. We also have Julie Costin coming to work with our co-teaching teams to do some planning. Teachers' teams are really excited about that. Our teacher aides are going to be part of that, and they don't always get to be part of the co-planning time that we have during the day. So, that's pretty much what the day will look like.
So, everyone realizes there is no school on Friday, or staff development day.
Five point six, data presentation, demo IQ, ten of you.
What I wanted to take just a minute and, and review with you, this is what's known as School Tool IQ. It's now going to be built into our new student management system and offered as premier. But essentially, this is a data mining instrument that runs on top of the database in an organized way, so that you don't have to be a data geek like me to really get to the data and sort of drill into the data to answer those questions or to confirm those suspicions that you've had. And each one of these areas is actually an individual dashboard. Some of this is in an open forum, is not appropriate to really drill into. For example, the student view, I would literally select a student and would give me the highlights on a particular student, and I, I obviously can't do that in an open forum. Same thing with the faculty view. But some of these, at least in part, I, I want to kind of show you how this process works. So, let's take a quick peek at our attendance dashboard. And you can see at the top, we can select different school years. Obviously, this being our first year on the management system, we have limited data as we go back in history. We can drill in on a particular school or a particular grade, male, female, ethnicity. And inside of these custom filters are about another 30 or 40 different elements that we could actually pull out and filter on. If I wanted to, I can load a student filter and grab a bunch of student IDs and load those in and filter on that. So, for example, if I pull up a listing and said, here are all my student athletes for the month of October, what's their attendance like? I could load just those student IDs for, for my student athletes, and then I would see a pre-filtered attendance for those. As we go down, this is simply, hey, you've got 95.25% attendance so far this year. And again, we can break that down by school year, we could break it down by school name, and it updates on the fly. So, our worst attendance is at the high school, then middle school, and then the best attendance is actually at Sewer. And it just maps that out for you. We could drill in, and I could tell you- We could drill in, and I could tell you what days your attendance was better on. Is it better on a Monday or Friday, Wednesday? And you can actually drill into that. And again, up here at the top, we can drill in on a particular grade level. So if I was to select the high school and select the freshman class, we can update the page, and it'll tell me that the freshmen are there ninety-two point eight-one percent of the time. Is that better or worse than your seniors?
Eli asks you?
Better or worse than your seniors?
Better.
Okay, so we could take a quick peek at that. And yes, it is better than the seniors. Okay? So those are the kind of questions and things that you can sort of play with as you drill in. This is just attendance. We can see it by day, we can see it broken down by month. And again, if I wanted to see it, we simply select on the month and we drill in, and we'll actually see it as a pie graph. So geez, when the school year was brand spanking new, the attendance was much better, and then it sort of peaked up here. Everybody caught their first cold, they're out, and then we're getting a little bit better as we're getting towards October. So again, allows that level of a drill in. Same thing when we look at discipline. We can look at discipline and the number of discipline referrals. We can filter on grade level or by building. As we go down, we look at our top five offenses, it maps it out for us and tells us that thirty-three percent of all our referrals are for kids cutting class. And if we could eliminate cutting class, we could cut our referrals by three-hundred-and-seventy-four referrals so far this school year. So that is pretty substantial. And the amount of time that we waste yanking kids out of class, kids missing instruction, administrators chasing them around, you begin to appreciate the amount of time now that's going in to chase down all those kids. If we can just get them into class and keep them in class, things will begin to improve.
Can I have a quick question?
Sure.
Can you tell someplace in here, like clicking or drilling down? If, say, the cutting class was done, you know, the top kid had the most infections at, say, twenty? And then can you tell that data as well to see if, you know, the majority of them are coming from one or?
What I'm not showing you here is if I actually clicked on this cutting class and it pulls up by this wedge and I hit this drill-down button, it will actually give me an Excel spreadsheet of every single incident of a kid cutting class.
And their name?
Their name, whether or not they've got an IP and about forty other elements that go along with them that you can filter on.
So you can see if they have other infractions besides?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, the one that I've hidden down here is the top five cumulative suspensions, because it lists the kids right out. So the kids that you have suspended multiple times, it puts the top ringer on the top run there and says, "This kid, you've suspended ten different times," and lists it right out for you. But again, I can't do that in a public session. We have to hide that sort of data. You can see your top five dispositions and what the administrators are doing to try and curb that behavior. And again, in schools are leading the way, twenty-eight percent or two-hundred-and-ten in schools. So you are paying for somebody to monitor that in-school suspension and to collect all of that work and so on. Again, probably necessary. My favorite, obviously, is core scores. And we just finished up closing out the first marking period at our high school. This does only pull marking period data, it doesn't pull progress report data. But as we begin to drill down a little bit, we have some final core scores. These are summer school grades that have come in, and we have some summer school grades. But essentially, we get a nice little pretty pie chart here of the grade distribution at the high school. And essentially, what, you can see these different filters that I would have an opportunity to use, so that as we move forward, I can compare the change in the number of kids passing marking period one to marking period two to marking period three. And a year from now, we'll be able to say, is this marking period of fourteen, fifteen any better than it was for thirteen, fourteen? And did our percentages change from one year? And simply throw them up on a chart. And again, if I wanted to know who that seven percent was, we can simply click on that and drill down and tell me all the kids that fall in that range. So again, if you want a quick DNF list, you've got it at your fingertips if you need to call those kids in or counselors, this is who you need to get in, get some parents in here for some parent conferences. They have that available at their fingertips. More importantly, and the thing that I like to do with this is to say, what are they failing? All right? So we have all the core scores in there. So if we were to look at an overall average right now, our, and I'll just pick out, our fifty to fifty-nine, eight percent of our kids are falling into that range. So if I look at English, and we pull out English as a department and we update the page, do I have more or less than eight percent of the kids failing English? So if we took a quick peek at that and says, yeah, twelve percent of the kids are actually failing English. So that's higher than your building average by almost four percent or thirty percent higher. If I go one step farther and say, the group that this is really gonna hurt are really my seniors. If seniors fail English, they don't walk the stage. So again, I select seniors out of here, we drill in one step farther, and we say, what's going on with the seniors? They're failing at a seventeen percent rate, and of course, they need to walk the stage at the end of the first ten weeks. That's alarming.
Can I go across to just?
Please.
In terms of the other pie chart that you showed relative to grade point average, I mean, the first one. Brian Morgan and his team could use that small wedge, seven percent at faculty meeting. So in terms of instructional leadership and building leadership, he can pull those names out, he can drill down to the name, and he can do a check and connect activity, right? So he would have all those names posted around the room at faculty meeting and say to his staff, walk around the room, put a check mark on that kid's name, you have a personal connection to that kid, right? Or to that student. In terms of creating and promoting activities with his staff to ensure that kids do have a connection with the adult at this school, because we know via the research that that makes a critical difference.
And I would encourage teachers or departments to take a look at that. Not only can I, you know, if we needed to, I can break it out by course and department, I can also break it right down by teacher. So if my failure rate is significantly higher than a teacher that teaches the same subject that I do, do we have the same grading policy? What kind of assignments are you assigning versus what I'm assigning? Because there should be some alignment between those courses. And the expectation, the level of homework and the level of rigor should be in some sort of an alignment there. So I know the three-eight assessment, we're almost done with the three-eight assessment, getting this one queued up. We have our data, our, what I call sort of ten-thousand-foot view data for this one, so that we can kinda see the number of kids that scored at a particular proficiency level and kinda where even the, you know, I can, I can click on this, it'll show me the standard deviation around our district average. And we can do that, and again, I can toggle between math and ELA, and we do have several years' worth of history here. By the first of November, I'm actually hoping to get this part down here done, which is actually gonna give us question-by-question item analysis by building, by grade level, and allow us to really sort of pull this out by standard. So we can get that data into the teachers' hands. And again, because that has some ability to get down to the student level, I'll know which kids are in my class, which ones are in my AIS, what they need to work on. And this is one that I'll be pressuring the state to get us that data over the summer so that we have that kickoff in September for next year. We're not waiting for November 1st to get our hands on that. But this'll give you an idea of really what SIS couldn't offer you in staying with that piece of software and some of the advantages of moving to something like School Tool IQ. I personally was the second person ever to sign up and have access to IQ when it was first launched. I've met with the developers for this on probably a dozen different occasions, driving the development of this particular tool to meet teachers' and administrators' needs. I think they have another five dashboards to build if they continue building on what I'm making suggestions on. But it's nice to have that relationship, that if there are pieces here that we feel like, well, geez, if we could only get to that, we could really start building some of that out. It's nice that we have that relationship, that I think we can push some of that development. They are doing an update about, every two months, they're doing a new release with this product. So they are building dashboards at a very rapid rate.
I'd love to add that I specifically remember in an early board meeting in my first year here, I believe it was September or October, not many board members, specifically I remember you asking, can you tell us why our students are performing this way on the state exams? Can we drill down to what you see as standards that are creating a barrier for their achievement scores? Can you tell us where they're doing really well? We can now.
All right. I just wanted to give you a sort of that overview, give you an opportunity to sort of see the tool and some of the stuff that it can do. There are simple filters to use, this is not overly complicated. Like I said, you don't have to be a database expert or master in Excel to get charts and graphs that might speak to you. A lot of the charts and graphs do drill in. If you just simply click on it, it'll drill in and give you more data. So it's nice for administrators who don't live in that data world but do need that data to help run their buildings and give them the power to make those necessary decisions.
Six point zero, committee reports, workshops, meetings. Six point one, minutes of curriculum and instruction committee meeting.
You have a motion?
So moved by Dea.
Second. Seconded by Kathy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
Six point two, report on audit committee meeting held on October 7th, 2013. Mr. Carver, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Robles.
Well, what we did was we went through the external audit, which you all just saw. And you'll get the minutes that say we went through the internal audit next time.
Very good.
Thank you.
That's the report.
Six point three, report on long-range planning committee meeting held on October 15th, 2013. Mrs. Carver, Mrs. Rhodes, Mrs. Grober, Mr. Robles.
Well, what we did in our workshop, which was six to seven o'clock tonight, is what we discussed in our long-range planning committee. So that's it, and you'll get the minutes next time to reflect what we did in our workshop earlier.
I'm just sitting on a roll today.
Dates to remember?
I had a question about audit committee meeting. Were we setting up one for risk assessment yet, or are we still on hold for that?
We just need to contact Alicia. She had some emergencies in her family, so I'll contact her.
Okay. And just, you know, beware of some of these dates coming up, things like the Hall of Fame Dinner. There's still time to sign up that, if anyone is interested in going to that. Rochester, if anyone's going to Rochester this coming weekend. If you did not turn in your resolutions tonight to Bill, please get them to him before, are you leaving Bill Friday, Saturday?
Thursday.
Thursday. So if you did not turn your packet into Bill, please get that to him by Thursday. Or if you have it now, you can just hand it over to Bill. And just, you know, take a look through some of those dates. Thank you.
I have one thing. We have a workshop coming up. So should we long-range planning, maybe meet and, I don't know what the plan for that workshop was yet? I don't think we decided anything.
I know, I will not be able to attend a workshop on November 5th. I am out of town that day.
Honey, what did we talk about doing on November 5th? Did we just set aside the date?
We did set aside the date. And I think that we believed that we wouldn't be this far down the path, actually, relative to the agenda that we had rolled out back in, I think that was August on a Sunday? Was it August?
Right.
Okay. So we have worked our way pretty much through that agenda. I think for November 5th, we need to concentrate on finalizing the metrics associated with the board goals. That certainly should be a primary goal on that, on that date. And I think it is a good idea to at least have some review with long-range planning committee as to what the rest of the agenda, how the rest of the agenda will unfold.
So do you wanna set up a long-range planning committee, meeting?
We could do that the Monday night prior. Is that okay? Do it on Monday, the 4th?
It's okay with me, is it, or is it everybody else?
Whatever time works for you.
That's election day.
Well, we already knew that going in.
It's in the boardroom, though. The elections are in the boardroom.
Maybe you should postpone this.
Well, you could go to the high school. You could meet in a different location.
There are other offices in the?
Oh, yeah. You could use behind the photocopy room. We've met there many times.
So November 4th, long-range planning committee at?
Six?
At six.
And might be a few minutes late, but it should be there close to six. So Monday at six?
Oh, I don't know. So Eli, I'm sorry, I'm having a sidebar conversation with me here, I apologize. About Tuesday, November 26th. Sorry, Eli, threw you under the bus. November 26th, long-range planning committee meeting. I don't know if you wanna have two of those within one month or not.
No, we can cancel that. That's right before Thanksgiving night.
We have a board meeting that night anyways.
We do, yep.
Honey, is that gonna be an issue seeing there's no school Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, again in Seward that late on Tuesday?
Wednesday, most of us have a half-day that day anyways, a lot of the bargaining unit members, so the school will be open.
Yes, sir. Can I just add that Genesys got their university presentation from around?
Oh, no excuse.
Thursday. I'm sorry.
On Thursday.
One fifteen.
One fifteen.
Thank you.
Seven point zero, old business. Eight point zero, financial matters. Eight point one, executive audit and management letter.
Do you have a motion? So moved by Dea.
Second.
Seconded by Eli. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
Eight point two, year-to-date budget status report, period ending eight thirty-one, 2013.
Do you have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Sam.
Second.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
Eight point three, internal things report, period ending eight thirty-one, 2013.
Do you have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Kathy.
Second.
Seconded by Eli. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
Eight point four, salary adjustments, certified instructional.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Eli. Seconded by Amanda. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
Eight point four, salary adjustments, certified instructional.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Eli. Seconded by Amanda. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
At this point, the board will consider whether to pursue the consent agenda for items nine point zero through twelve point one, with additional items nine point two-two to nine point two-six, and ten point eight through ten point one.
Do you have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Michael. Discussion.
Just a point here, see, we're down another custodial worker. I mean, we're down two positions in the last few weeks, am I correct on that?
There's a resignation here, but he was reassigned to another building.
He got promoted to a custodian.
Oh.
No, we're not down any positions. We've had a couple of transfers moving up. So usually what happens, we have a senior custodian that ends up retiring or leaving or resigning. Custodian usually gets bumped up to that position, so they have to resign their position, and it goes right through the whole system. So I end up hiring custodial workers.
Yeah. So the two. So we're losing more staff.
No, 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 we're not losing any bodies. So we're filling those positions, Sam.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
Board of Education will consider to move into a faculty session for discussion of the employment history of any particular person or corporation managing the discipline of any particular person, student, and or corporation.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Kathy.
Second.
Seconded by Sam. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
Does anybody want?